All right, folks, we're ready to go. We'll go ahead and get started. Don't forget to turn off your phones or anything else that might make noise. If you wish to join us in the invocation, please stand, and then that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, for which you're also welcome to join us. Lord, thank you for allowing us to be together today to do the good works of the county. Thank you also for guiding, guarding, and protecting those who are in harm's way locally and around the world. We appreciate all that you do for us in so many ways every day and for those that we love. Please give us wisdom today and going forward so that we can continue to serve the county to the best of our abilities. We ask this in the name of Jesus Christ. Katie?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United Nations of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bell.
Here.
Kern.
Here.
Freeling.
Present.
Harrison.
Here.
Pinkelman.
Here.
Majerri.
Here.
Meeks.
Here.
Scott.
Present.
Walrath.
Present.
Werfel.
Here.
Yarborough.
Present.
Elliott.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have 12 present.
Thank you. The minutes from last week have been out there for a few days. Any changes? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as prepared, submitted by the clerk?
Oh, move.
Support. Freeling, supported by Scott. All in favor signify, please, by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Minutes are approved. Madam Clerk, we don't have communications this week, is that right?
There are no communications for this week.
Okay, very good. We're at the point where it would be in order to do a public hearing on the CDBG grant closeout. So to do that, we need to adjourn this meeting and convene the public hearing. Is there a motion to do so?
I make a motion.
Moved by Yarborough, is there support? Supported by Bell. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Kern.
Yes.
Freeling.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Pinkelman.
Yes.
Majerri.
Yes.
Meeks.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Walrath.
Yes.
Werfel.
Yes.
Yarborough.
Yes.
Bell.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 12 ayes.
Thank you. We are now in public hearing. And Katie, would you like to fill us in?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
We are here today to do the grant closeout for the Community Development Block Grant. This is a CARES funding request that we received in 2020. And so this was, in 2020, Congress appropriated money for the Corona Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, which is known as CARES. They put money into the National Community Development Block Grant Program. So this is separate from just the CARES funding directly that the federal government had given to you all. And Michigan received an allocation for that CDBG funding for the CARES Act, and then based allocations to counties accordingly through the CDBG formula at that time. So with that funding, the county received $377,362.61. And what is eligible cost under the CDBG CARES funding? It is specific unbudgeted COVID-19 unbudgeted county expenditures used to prevent, prepare, and respond to the coronavirus. It also included some healthcare equipment, public services, which is where we spent most of our, that's where we targeted these funds to assist the vulnerable population in accessing food, medical care, and prescriptions. It could also address salaries. So what we focused on and identified the needs for was working with partners and addressing vulnerable populations to access food, medical care, and prescriptions. We identified some of our countywide community partners, and that is the Area Agency on Aging, Bering County, Bering Community Foundation, and then the United Way of Southwest Michigan. How these funds were used were broken out into different areas of the needs. Unfortunately, United Way and Bering Community Foundation had pooled some resources as well to address some community needs that happened to call that program CARES, which uniquely is what this CDBG CARES funding. So we were able to help them expend and expand their dollars to assist various agencies and resources to the countywide and all populations. So some of the funds went towards school districts to assist in technology, social and emotional curriculum, cleaning supplies, and books for students. Most, many of the funding went towards food and personal care items, cleaning and PPE supplies, servicing specifically the public, and telehealth for mental health organizations. Under the Area Agency on Aging, they received their own pot of CARES funding, but they exhausted those funds and still had significant needs to prevent hospital admissions, to shorten hospital stays, and through providing in-home care. They've also, overall, this was a successful program. All the funding was used, and we are in the, as part of any CDBG or federal funds, we have to do a closeout of the grant, which is offering a public hearing of showing what the objectives were, did we meet those objectives, and how the funds were expended. And so the funding period was from, in 2020, from January, or March 20th to December 31st of 2020. And all those funds were used at that time, but the reimbursement didn't actually trigger for, we didn't get the funds from the state until 2021. So that's why it's in, it'll be reviewed under the 2021 audit. So this is the last step of doing that closeout, and that's all I have at this point.
Any questions up or down the line here? Anyone in the audience have any questions? As the clerk has reminded me during public hearings, we're supposed to ask about that. Yes, sir.
I have one question. Where did that money come from?
This was a federal fund, so it came from the federal government to the state, and then it came past.
Where did they get it from? Did print it?
Kind of, yeah. Kind of, yeah.
Any, any other questions? Comments? Yes, sir.
Yes, so on these funds, separate with municipality, can they apply for some of those funds?
Well, this program has ended. All the funds have been expended and exhausted. But this was with our partnerships. The local municipalities also may have received CARES funding as well for specific.
Can we get the names of the commenters?
I have to have them.
Adolph, just say your name for the record.
Oh, Elsor Adolph. Baker. Red State of Baker.
Your name, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Jerry Edwards-Binton-Hoggin.
Any other public comments about the grant closeout process for the CDBG grant? All right, then, public comments are closed, and we're ready to close the public hearing and resume our regular session. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved, which Chair.
Moved by Scott, supported by Werfel. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Freeling.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Pinkelman.
Yes.
Majerri.
Yes.
Meeks.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Walrath.
Affirmative.
Werfel.
Yes.
Yarborough.
Yes.
Bell.
Yes.
Kern.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 12 ayes.
Thank you. All right, we're at the point where we receive public comments regarding resolutions that are on the agenda. I would note that one resolution is pulled. Jim, I can't remember the last four digits. I was thinking it was ending in six-three, but I don't see one on here.
Maybe it's very full.
It says that. Maybe I missed it. But do we have a revised agenda, or is there one that we need to? Oh, no, it's coming next week.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's good. The consent calendar is good, as is. Nothing's been pulled. So if anybody has any comments about any resolution on the agenda, and I think we have a few that were added. Yeah, four of them on the backside of the first page. So if you have any comments about resolutions, this would be the time. Yes, sir. Name and where you're from.
Tony Van Der Haart shows. I've seen there's a new temporary shelter manager being appointed. I wonder why, but is that person certified by the state? To be a shelter manager. I don't see any place on there where she's certified. And if not, I would suggest you put somebody in there that is certified.
Very good, thank you. Any other comments about resolutions on the agenda, including the four under the added resolution category? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar, including those four added resolutions ending in six-four, six-eight, seven-oh, and seven-one? Yes, ma'am? Any discussion? Moved by Freeling and supported by Walrath. Any discussion? Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Harrison.
Yes.
Pinkelman.
Yes.
Majerri.
Yes.
Meeks.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Walrath.
Yes.
Werfel.
Yes.
Yarborough. Bell.
Yes.
Kern.
Yes.
Freeling.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 12 ayes.
Thank you. Consent calendar is approved. We'll go to committee reports, and we'll start with Chair of PHS, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Personnel and Human Services Committee met this morning. We had a number of resolutions to consider, one regarding changing complement at the Juvenile Center. That will come to you next week. This is changing from case managers to therapists. No dollar impact. They're both positions, all three positions are budgeted exactly the same. The other was a, one coming from the Health Department. This is for the tuberculosis monitoring system. They use a digital system through Emocha Health, and so this is a renewal of a five-year contract. And so you'll see those next week. We also had two advanced-up higher requests, one for Information Systems Department for a budgeted position, and then another one for the Family Division Trial Court or the Juvenile Center. That's a new director, and both are coming in a little bit above the original efforts, but both within budgeted dollars. We also had a report from our Register of Deeds, Laura Freeling, went in a great deal regarding the activity of the department for the last year. And then we also considered a resolution that we'd like the board to consider for today. And if it be appropriate with the Chair, I'd like to read that resolution. This recognizes Robert Warren, who I think everyone is aware had recently passed away. So this would be Resolution B 12141990 dated today. Whereas it is important to recognize those in our community who provide for good, for the good of others, and whereas Robert J. Warren is one of those community members. And whereas Mr. Warren came to Southwest Michigan when he became employed by Clark Equipment Company, and in 1962, he married Elizabeth Schultz. And whereas Bob began his career at LeCo Corporation, which was in the family, the Schultz family, in 1968, and ultimately became its president, a position he held until 2016 when he retired. And whereas, under Mr. Warren's integrity, vision, and leadership, LeCo Corporation grew nearly three times the size it was when he became president, expanding internationally and is one of the top employers in Southwest Michigan. And whereas outside of LeCo, Bob was a farmer, landowner, boater, golfer, fisherman, and along with his wife Elizabeth, filled with generosity. And whereas they were lifelong supporters of the original Venetian Festival, Silver Beach Carousel, and multiple other organizations and causes. And it was due to their generosity that Silver Beach would come into the, become the Silver Beach County Park. And whereas while the beach was for sale in the 1980s, Warren decided to take it off the market and maintain ownership until Bering County was able to secure funding from the Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund, virtue of Silver Beach. And whereas, in addition, they contributed their own funds to provide the match for the trust fund grant, and on December 14th, 1990, Bering County was able to purchase the beach from LeCo. And whereas in 1998, the Shadowland Pavilion, located at Silver Beach County Park, was dedicated to Robert and Elizabeth Warren, stating, "Let it be remembered that Bering County's acquisition of Silver Beach from LeCo Corporation on December 14th, 1990, and many of the park improvements which followed were made possible through the generosity of Robert and Elizabeth Warren." And whereas, on April 23rd, 2022, Mr. Warren passed away, but his legacy will live on in his family, his business, and all things he touched in his 88 years. Now therefore be it resolved that the Bering County Board of Commissioners remembers and honors Robert J. Warren for being a true asset to the citizens of Bering County, and sends their condolences to his family during this time of grief, respectfully adopted on April 28th, Bering County Board of Commissioners.
Very good, thank you. And Mr. Chairman, I would then move approval of this resolution by the board. I will support that. Motion and the support. I take it include a motion to amend the agenda insofar as necessary to include this with the resolutions that we just approved, so that it is an official part of our record. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
And that was your support, is that correct?
Yes.
With that in mind, is there any discussion? Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Pinkelman.
Yes.
Majerri.
Yes.
Meeks.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Walrath.
Yes.
Werfel.
Yes.
Yarborough.
Yes.
Bell.
Yes.
Kern.
Yes.
Freeling.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 12 ayes.
Thank you. And if it's appropriate and everyone's in agreement, will the clerk please send a true copy, official copy of this resolution to Mrs. Elizabeth, Elizabeth Warren, under your letterhead? All right, very good. Thank you. Back to committee business. Any questions for PHS? All right, let's go to the Chair of Admin.
Thank you, Mac. We met this morning, and we had Chief Judge Mayfield and Court Administrator Carrie Smetanek-Haney in to see us this morning. They spent quite a bit of time at the very beginning talking about staffing, the challenges that they're having, finding qualified applicants to fill positions. She reiterated what Alvin Gonzalez did last week of the positions that are open at the Juvenile Center, which are 17. Criminal and Civil Division, there are five openings, and one of them is the Attorney-Magistrate position. Robert Clark is retiring after 31 years, so we wished him well. There are four in the trial court. The judge talked about finding qualified applicants, offered up some reasons, and also talked about how they're trying to be more flexible, not only in their work schedules, but still allowing people to work from home. And, and I think Brian, our county administrator, has also kind of told us that he also is experimenting with the different work schedules to try to get the work done, not burn people out, and be as efficient as we can. And so I think the trial court is looking at some of those same hurdles. The judge talked about trying to return back to normal operations. Stated that, you know, the situations that they deal with today are entirely different than the situations that arose 15, 20 years ago, and that they are trying to make the adjustment and adapt to that. And in her words, she said, "They want to give timely justice to everyone." She also talked about meeting via Zoom and meeting in person and the various operations of the court, and that a lot of that is dictated by the State Supreme Court as to whether they can meet in person or via Zoom. And so they are trying to be flexible with that as well. She made this statement, and I wrote it down. She says, "We, we try to take care of our employees and create an enjoyable environment." Yesterday, they had a Administrator Professional Day's breakfast, and that's where the judges all made breakfast for the employees. She provided a picture here for us, and we noticed there was a few judges in the picture, and she was not one of them. And she said she was busy making Mickey Mouse pancakes for the employees. So she was there, she just wasn't in the picture. And, and I think that's part of the sense of what she was trying to convey and, you know, respecting your employees, taking care of your employees, and, and just trying to do right by them. The last thing she talked about was court security. And, and it's something I had not even thought of until she brought it up, that, you know, the first people you see when you walk into courthouse are the sheriff's deputies. And it's not really a friendly environment when you walk in the door and you're met by armed guards and security and everything else. And she says that there are times when that will aggravate her, the clients, on how they got to get into the door. And so by the time they get to the courtroom, they're all agitated, and the judges have to deal with that. So, you know, and she was very appreciative of the sheriff, because I think the sheriff was sitting in the room at the time she said it. You know, it really wasn't aimed at him. It was just aimed at, you know, society. I mean, this is the way it is. This is the way we have to do. And, and in the same vein, you know, them trying not to agitate people as they come into the courthouse and go to the courtroom, so that the judges really don't have to deal with a lot of that. And there was a resolution that the PHS reported out on, that she informed us on a complement change to one of the positions, and that's our report as far as the court goes. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Okay, then we have, next time we get together, we're going to have a couple of resolutions for you. The one ending in five-two-six-zero is, we reported to you before on the West Michigan Guardianship, and that we agreed to go ahead and supplement their, their budget. So this resolution authorizes that. Three-year agreement equalling $25,187.36 for 2023, ending in 2025 at $26,204.93. We will also have Resolution 5272. This is a speed study. It's in, I think, yeah, Chickamin Township. Harbert Road, from Red Arrow Highway to its end at Lake Michigan. Apparently, they did a speed study, study back in 2018. The township felt that there is increased traffic and speeds, and they want to see if they can get it lowered, the speed limit lowered. And this is the only way to do it, is to start with the speed study. And they understand they have to live with the results. So that resolution will be, be coming to you next time. We have one board appointment. Community Corrections Advisory Board. We filled two seats. One is a three-year term. I'm sorry, they're both three-year terms. The citizen rep will be Deborah Panazzo, and the business rep will be Ann Hart. And these terms. Oh, I'm sorry. And then we also have the 911 Advisory Board. We have one position to fill there, and that's Denny Sexton. So we have that for you. And then we have two property use requests. The first one is from the Prauzel Art Center. This is a renewal. We've done this many, many years, or at least as long as I've been around. It's to use the parking lot. It'll be on July 8th. And July 8th, 9th, and 10th, and it'll be to use the parking lot after 5:00 PM. So after the employees have all left and the parking lot's empty, then they will use that. The second request comes from the Alex Mandrino Foundation, and this is Alex's duck, duck run down at the, in front of the courthouse. June 18th starts at 6:00 AM, ends at 11:00 AM, and we approve that request. That is also a reoccurring request. We okayed that. And that is our report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Questions for Admin? All right, Madam Chair of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a meeting with our Chairman Elliott and with our Administrator, Brian Desette, when we first started. And we talked about the bid process with Executive Assistant to the Administrator, Nat Christie. We're working on our policy and all of it, and so we're going to do a practice with the next bid that we have in the form of, to see how it works. Then our Community Development Director, Dan Betty, came in, and you know, as you know, this morning, we had in our committee of the whole, a public hearing about the Speedway Brownfield Plan, and that resolution was passed just here at 10:30. We also had a resolution about MDOT, Michigan Department of Transportation, signature authorization, and that's with our Bering bus and the different things we do with that, and it was explained to us. And then we had financial analyst Jake Littaker to come in, and we had some bid openings for the road department. I'd like to ask Commissioner Scott if he would explain that to us, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had five bid openings today. Each one was for HMA, and this was by township. We did St. Joe Township, Coloma Township, Chickamin Township, Royalton Township, and Water Valley Township. Those bids were open. They were for various lengths of miles, going from 2.8 to 2.07, 2.59 miles of road. That was the lowest, was 0.59. We accepted the bids, and we made motions to send them back to the department heads to make sure that they met all of the bidding specifications and that, and to move forward with the lowest bidder. And if not, they have to come back to us and give us justification on why they didn't go with the lowest bidder.
If anybody would love to see the numbers, I've got them up here. So they're all right here. If anybody'd like to see them. That's my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. And then we had a resolution to pay the weekly bills and what we do, it's a combination of the road bills and the other departments. And then, oh, we had a waiver request, two waiver requests. And one was for the Kalamazoo Office of Community Corrections. It was a grant and it's through the circuit court for seven thousand, five hundred dollars. And then another one was the Cadillac Culvert. It was a large culvert for the roadway and that was the road department. And that was seventeen thousand, eight hundred, ninety-five dollars and those we passed. And then we had approval of our April twenty-one meetings. We also had a comment from a citizen that was in our committee and that comes quite often. Michael Haskin of Bainbridge. He talked about different parts and things that were made for the bridges and just for our community, like what Superior Steel did, Ross Carriers. It was very interesting and it was regarding the bridges. And it spurred some more conversation about other specialty companies that only what we made in Benton Harbor, Benton Township, Berrion County worked. So that was our meeting and our report. Members, did anything else you want to add?
I made a mistake when I told you it wasn't Bainbridge, it was Pipestone Township.
Oh, Pipestone, I'm sorry. I asked.
Yes.
Pipestone. Thank you.
So we get the record straight.
All right. Any other additions?
Yes, ma'am. Just note that prior to next week's night meeting, there will be a five-thirty PM meeting of the finance committee. And that will be at the site, Michigan State University Extension.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for finance? All right, before we get to individual commissioner reports, the agenda says we have some board appointments to deal with. First, we'll go with the ones that have been recommended by admin. Jim, do you want me just to run through those? And, or do you have them? I can do it if you want.
You want to do just the admin or do you want me to do all three?
Well, there's admin, there's some for PHS, and then there's an appointment for me to make according to this list.
Yeah, if you prefer, go ahead and do it.
Okay, so recommendations from admin, which I believe you already covered during the committee report, just to formalize it, would be to appoint Deborah Panazzo to a three-year term of the Community Corrections Advisory Board. That term would expire twelve-thirty-one of twenty-twenty-four. And she'd be a citizen rep on the CCAB. An appointment of Ann Hart, Business Community Rep to the nine-eleven advisory board to fill a vacancy. And it says here that term expires the end of this calendar year, twelve-thirty-one of twenty-two. And then is Dennis Sexton a reappointment? I can't remember what you had mentioned. That's a new appointment.
Right, he's a new appointment.
And so his term would be three years again, or?
It would be. Yeah, he would be reappointed.
Okay. Okay, all right. So we've got that. And then unless the clerk, the corporate counsel tells me otherwise, I think we can just cover these in one vote. PHS is, as was mentioned, the reappointment to the mental health authority for a three-year term. But it says expires three-thirty-one of twenty-two, which was last week. So is that supposed to, or a few weeks ago, is that supposed to be of twenty-five? Okay. So, and that's, it looks like for Marion Meyer, Ed Many and E. Arthur Robertson. So those would be for board action. Is there a motion to approve those appointments coming out of admin and PHS?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Curran. Is there support? Supported by Harrison. We'll get you on the next floor. Thanks. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign.
Aye.
Those appointments are done. And then it says here, I'm supposed to reappoint Michael to the mental health authority and I'm guessing that term also is three-thirty-one of twenty-twenty-five. So, Michael, if you want to keep doing it, you are appointed. Okay, all right. So that takes care of those. Then we have commissioner reports. Why don't, Dave, why don't we start down there and we'll work our way to the north?
Okay.
Real quick, we didn't have discussion on those appointments and I did want to mention that there was one other citizen that had applied for the nine-eleven and we have directed Annette to find a place for that person. As we've asked people to get involved, we've got qualified applicants getting involved. And so we have asked for that to happen as well. And I am glad we had the two positions for the community corrections that we were able to get both people involved that had applied. And then I did have the MAC HHS meeting this week and we did approve the platform going forward for the next year. That's my report.
No report. No report.
No report. Thank you. I just want to take a moment and thank this board for its action that it took on the two resolutions approving the broadband grants for both Bainbridge and Orinoco Township. And I also want to thank you for approving the contract with DCS Technologies, which is the mapping service that I had talked about last week on going through and mapping out all the broadband assets that we have within Berrion County. I do want to take a moment. I think that the administrator had touched base with everybody in different committees. But there will be a letter that will be going out circulating to municipal leaders highlighting the work that BC BIT, the Broadband Task Force, has been doing on this objective and also highlighting the fact that those two grants have now been approved by this board for awarding. We really appreciate that municipalities have been participating in this and getting engaged. We have two months left in the application process. There's been discussion with BC BIT to be good stewards of the dollars that we've been charged with. And so in that, we've been recognizing there's been a change in the land as it relates to both federal and state funding for broadband, broadband infrastructure and deployment. And so we are actually flowing the awarding of those applications as they come through. We're not asking municipalities to stop their efforts, but that we're going to be more deliberate and prudent in the way that we're, we're looking at these as we're looking at those funds that are coming from the federal and state government. We're going to be looking at different grant opportunities, like, but not to be limited to USDA Reconnect, the BEAD program that's coming out of the NTIA through the Infrastructure Act and the State CMIC grant, which is connecting Michigan communities in to ensure that we're going to have a larger pool of funds to be able to pull from broadband deployment and infrastructure. As I just mentioned, we've contracted or we're going to be engaging in contract with DCS. They're going to be helping us with that mapping service. That's one of the things that we've been hearing from municipalities, that it's the mapping of those areas and the gaps that they have for them to be able to have a clear picture and understanding of what funding they're going to be needing and requesting. And so I just wanted to take this moment to pause and make that statement, Mr. Chair, to make everybody aware of what we are doing in BC BIT. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I attended two meetings. One, the meeting for the Berrion County ALPAC. This is the Community Police Relations Group that meets on a monthly basis. And the second was for the Southwest Michigan Planning Commission, the SEDS group, which is the Community Economic Development Service, where we're looking at ways to grow the local economy in the three-county area. And with both of those, there are a lot of great work being done.
No report.
No report. No report.
Okay, Brian, do you have anything?
Yes, sir.
Other, or general public comments now? Anything under the sun in two minutes or less? Name and where you're from.
A little too close here.
Belzer, Hager Township.
No, I am really impressed. You guys are getting there. See, we're. I'm looking at you. Unfortunately, these people here, you know, they got their backs turned. Well, they can always turn. This is really good. That's step one. We've got a few more to go, okay? Now, this Lico resolution that you passed, I wish you guys would tell us what that word is. It's not, what is it, Laboratory Equipment Corporation? Lico, right? You should have put that in there, okay? A lot of people don't know what that is. Another thing here that's found out there, still ain't working. But if somebody put in a work order, whoever's in charge of the buildings, tell them to get it, get it done, okay? The people walking in here, they're going to be embarrassed. You see you guys sitting there and to go over there, the first thing to do is try to get some water. But if you have kids bringing, coming in here and they turn it on, "Oh, mom, the water's not working here." Well, that's a bad reflection on you guys. Disrespect. Come on, let's get with it, okay? Good. I really like the setup. Now, I'm taking up a little bit more room on that picture up there now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Belzer.
Yes, sir.
Time better, so does. Yeah, I think it's been over a year and a half now that we've been looking for an engineer for the road department. I know we'd have an engineer out there, but the engineer is not an experienced engineer. We used Evermarsh, we used Chris Cook. Neither one of those, I don't think, was involved in this bridge study because Chris has walked away from the county, from my understanding. And when are we going to get a engineer for this county? Has there been headhunters hired to find something? There's got to be an engineer someplace in the United States that can take this job. I don't think we'd be in this position if we did have a decent engineer that knew what was going on with bridges. You put a bridge in Goine that holds water on the deck of the bridge and the engineer you have today is the one that designed it and did the survey work on it. Are we going to have that on this bridge when we're done or are we throwing? You've got a deck that's just about destroyed on the north side now. You've got two distinct bridges there, North Bridge and a South Bridge. Strip the deck off of it, repair all the metalwork, put a new deck on it. They built the bridge out on Benton Center Road from nothing. It took them less than two weeks to put the pans on, put the deck on and have the bridge open for traffic. They're talking about having this bridge out, serviced for, until August. That bridge has gotten more traffic out than any other bridge and it's the only short access to the hospital. By going through Benton Harbor, you're adding five minutes.
Two minutes, sir.
To get a heart patient to that hospital.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir. Would you wish to speak? Name and where you're from.
Dick Bertog, seventeen-twenty-one Riverside Road, still known as Dump Truck Alley. As far as the damn roads, we have no engineer. But Brian, he got fired over it. But he was, it was a total joke. Right now, I have pictures. You had called me wanting to, if we wanted to talk. And when I mentioned terms, I did deliberately, that we should not. Sooner or later, you need to people to cease the taking. I got about five thousand. And your people have none of this thing now. But you have totally ignored me. This is going to go to court. I wanted you, but I'm being seized at a desk in a chair next to a judge and let him condemn himself. He's a liar. He's tearing up the roads. You need to come out there and look at the roads. You don't have an engineer. I didn't, when I met out here at the meeting, I got a chance to speak with him a little bit. He didn't make any sense when I asked him a couple of questions. Oh, I know about that. He don't know a damn thing about frost heat. My house is brand new. Walls ten inches thick, nine-foot ceilings. My walls have cracked. Next to me.
Same thing. A widow, a black lady, ended up taking that wrong time. Where she go like this, crack wall up, go across the street, the basement's tearing up, full of water.
Go across the bridge at Myers, this place, same doggone thing. Five houses out there tore up. I've got pictures. I got photographs, not only from Google Earth. Matt, you know, one time you asked me, "Dick, where did you get these pictures?" What they were, they were actual shots at present time, when the operation was happening. My front yard had been tore up by the so-called Drain Commissioner. He don't know what he's doing. He's the joke. But these were actual.
Two minutes, sir.
Pardon me?
Two minutes.
Okay. But I'd like to show you some pictures sometime. I don't know if I should or not. Because this is going to court. I want it in court. I want it in court.
Thank you, Mr. Bertog. Anyone else wish to be heard? Okay, that concludes general public comment. We will now go to other business. Ezra?
Yes, I'd just like to make a comment. I, I like the way this setup is and it makes my heart happy that Adolf is now happy.
Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
I guess it's other business now?
It is.
Okay, well, I want to get and read some to the commission. Thank you. Today, I'm committing my resignation as a, as a county commissioner. That don't mean I'm going to get out of the picture, but I asked five people to be here and they all showed up. It's my granddaughter and my son, Jerry from the commissioner and Dick Bertog. There's some, some, some issues that's going on that I would kind of like somebody need to listen, but he's in my district. And there's such a thing called environmental injustice. And I kind of think that's going on with Ox Creek. Basically, in, in his area, where, where he's not too far from Walpole. Walpole, right in the back door. And I kind of want them to kind of, the, the new attorney elected him to look into what Bertog's talking about. There's some really issues and there's a lot of things I want to say at a point about. One of the things I've done, Ezra Scott and I went to DC. He met some of my family that was there. We had dinner. But what he didn't know, that the lady that he met, her mother was a county commissioner in Rock Island. So we got a big, we had a, my family got involved in being involved in local government. And, and then also in that area, I had a another cousin that was with, with, with Chicago Bears and he retired and he went back in the area. He was president of school board. So when I want these young girls right here to be involved in that. Well, my youngest, my youngest son is given to lead this area. And I just don't know what I do. And what, I didn't know if I was making the right decision. But my granddaughter, as I was talking to her dad, wanted to make appointment with. I mean, appointment, I'd be like, maybe these kids can see things that I can't see. So I wanted them to let, let them know what I expect of them. My, my son is leaving, going to Georgia. And I want wherever these kids go to, I want them to be involved in their community. So I want to let them know, this is, they don't learn everything at school. So I wanted them to come see what good government's about. And this, these are some of the smartest people ever. So I want to see these smart women. And I want them, at that point, I know they're going to be in the air. And because they, they got a little me in them. And because they got a little me in them. So, okay, but Jerry, thank you for coming. And then I'd say, and I want you to be on this Ox Creek. This is with environmental justice. This needs to have stopped. And we need to kind of clean this area up. And you know what really bothers me? Basically, we got a corporate giant here. And this service changing. At the point about inclusion, we need, Benton Harbor needs to be put on the map. The trails and things, you don't know what this means, but the development of Benton Harbor. I did some things when I left for Benton Harbor. And I paid for feasibility study out of my own pocket. I think you can attest to that. To do better and better, like Dick, I care about your family, and I care about my family. I just want to let you know. That's why I had you here, because I wanted to kind of mention, at the point, I don't, I don't know. I don't know if we could have a boxing match sometime or not, but we be going at it. But I am a kind of person that's very committed to what he do. And I've been really successful over the years of what I've done. And continue to, we need the trades. I'm a product of the trades. We need the trades to continue. Everybody not gonna be a rocket scientist, a lawyer or some. We need somebody to basically to build a house, and do the plumbing, and do the electrical. We need that. So we need to kind of focus. Ben Behring, I think, is a little ahead of us on this steel trades thing. But some kind of way, we kind of need to do things. So if Ben said that, I want to thank everyone that I actually show up to come. And Dick, I do care about your family. The point. So I just want to let that know. Well, okay. And I want someone to Adolf, I really enjoy when you come to these meetings. I really enjoy that. We have the same problem. I have a hearing problem. I think you got the same problem.
I do, I do.
But, okay. Well, Adolf too. So I just, when Ben said that, as Ben the commissioner, this is the hardest thing I've did in my life. But I will never get out of doing some of the things that need to be done in this community. And these young girls right there, wherever they at, where they go, I want them to be a part of that to do. Or hopefully, they'll be here. I got eight of them and another one on the way, so number nine, so.
As long as you care about other people, your neighbors, your kids, your friends, you'll take up on it.
Hey, Dick, let me finish this. I'm trying, I'm trying to sit down. You can keep me up, but these young girls right here, I love, I love all my kids. But these are the kids that I see a lot of me in them. And I want them at the, that's why I wanted to be here. They took them out of school, but this is school. So I hope they'll never forget that. And another thing I want to do, I did Christmas. I bought me a Santa Claus outfit. And I dressed up as Santa Claus, but I kind of told them I was from the South Pole. Okay, and then, but, no, and then I kind of put something on, I said, you know what? I said, I basically, I say, I say, the reason that I'm tan is because I'm closer to equator. Okay, so now I kind of put something else on them. Now, they probably didn't know what equator was, so I bet they looked it up. Internet. And I'm giving them your extension number, so at that point where they can call you, learn something about government. Okay, so it being to say that, Dick, I'm gonna sit down right now and shut up. Adolf, I appreciate.
This is signed by Commissioner Reeves, indicating that he is submitting a letter of resignation effective today. And referencing that he's been with the county for nearly six years. This is the sixth year now.
Most six year.
Yeah. And we've talked about this day. And tried to talk you out of it on more than one occasion.
Yeah.
And it's with true appreciation for everything you've done, but with great regret to have you resign.
Well, I never get out of the picture.
Well, I understand, and we look forward to having you stay involved to whatever extent you wish to. But this will this place will not be the same on Thursday mornings without you here.
Well, Mac, thank you for your reply. And let me see. I never get out, I never get out of the picture. So they have these, some of the smartest people ever seen in my life. I mean, they're really smart. I think, and with each new commissioner comes some, a different idea. I've noticed that. So I don't know who you're gonna pick, basically, to take my place. And I know this commission was gonna pick somebody to, I guess, carry on.
Like to pick a guy named Don Meeks, actually.
Well, I would, I would request you to deny it. Thank you.
Understood.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I would humbly request that we don't accept this letter of resignation only for a personal standpoint. Because the camaraderie that this Republican has had with that Democrat has been immense. And it just goes to show that party doesn't mean anything. It's the principle of the fact. And I understand Don's desire, and I understand the granddaughters. I have seven myself. It's just gonna be very difficult for me because we came in together as commissioners. And I, the only thing is, is I guess that if you have to accept this resignation, I make one request that Don Meeks, you do not change your cell phone number. Thank you.
Well, I want to correct Scott at this point. You don't get a chance to correct him. You're more of a, like an independent. So you said, all right, now you like, you run as a I. So now I gotta correct you, Scott. I don't get a chance to do that. Thank you.
Touche. Anyone else? Anyone else along the line here? Yes, sir?
Yeah, I just want to thank Don for his service. I think most of the time, he's been on the admin committee. In fact, he was my...
I got a chance to be on all the committees. And one of the thing, Mamie was missing one time, and I got a chance to be on her committee. So I've had a chance to vote in every committee.
That's good.
So, well, which is good. I mean, it's really a pleasure, but Mamie and I, I don't know, Mamie and I go back many years, many years. I say I'm seventy, seventy-one going seventy-two. I've known Mamie that long. So Mamie, and Mamie, you're doing a good job, and I want you to go up to see. You're a smart lady.
Right, you're thirty-nine.
One of the smart ladies.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, good luck to you, Don.
Well, and I appreciate your input into, into the admin committee. But don't be surprised by kind of show up, just kind of monitor, see what you guys are doing.
Keep an eye on us.
Okay.
Yep, may I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I'm sad about this resignation. But I think, and that's what you said, you wanted to do things with your son and your family and all. And I appreciate that. But I have enjoyed so much being on the committee and the things that we've done. We've gone places. And you say, what is this? I have no idea, but you will go. And so I just thank you for all the time and the studying and, and learning, you're learning this, this part, you know, of how things happen. So thank you, and I wish you well. And like you said, you're not leaving town. We're gonna see each other. And I'm so thankful that your family came. It's beautiful. Thank you.
All right now, sir, we'll get to public, or we already did public comment, but I'd like to hear from people on the board right now. Thank you. Yes, sir?
I'd just like to say, I appreciate Don and what he's done for the board, or more specifically for me, coming onto this board as the youngest by far. I always tell Mamie and Don, they're like my additional set of grandparents. I remember we were riding to Mackinac, and the conversation was very similar to how me and my grandparents talk, and they were just teaching me a lot about the world and giving me a lot of solid advice and words of wisdom that, you know, will definitely take me far. And I remember meeting Don back in 2019, when I first expressed desire to run for office. And Don's been with me every step of the way, just being a rock of support. And I just appreciate everything that you do. And I, I need you to stay by my side.
Well, you know, you're growing, you come in, and you're growing. You're doing very well. And I keep telling you that I'm very proud of what you're doing, man. I'm telling you how you, you know, but you get some up there, use it. Okay, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other business?
Mr. Chair?
Sir?
Before the commissioners leave, I was hoping that we could
Right.
memorialize this moment and this room set up with a picture of Don in the middle, with the other commissioner standing by him.
And be happy to have your son and granddaughters in that photo, Don. So, all right, Don, with regret, your resignation is accepted effective today. Announcements and reminders, we meet next Thursday down at MSU. Corporate counsel, I believe there's a process that we will now go through to fill this spot, and I think we have thirty days from today in which to make an appointment effective. Is that right?
Yes, under the bylaws, there is some action yet to be taken today as well.
Okay, do you want to run through that?
Sure. So under Act Two Sixty-One of nineteen sixty-six, the Board of Commissioners now has thirty days to, to appoint a successor to fill the vacancy that's been created. If the board fails to make the appointment within the thirty days, then a special election will need to be called. Under the board's bylaws, because this resignation has been presented today during our open meeting, once it's been formally accepted, which it has, it should be forwarded as official correspondence to the clerk. The board will then need to take formal action to determine whether the, whether to proceed with a, an appointment process, or whether to have a special election be called in lieu of the appointment process. The vacancy must be filled by May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, that's thirty days from today. And if the board determines to proceed using a, an application and appointment process, then the chair should briefly describe the, the district that's to be filled, which is set forth in the press release, outline the application procedure, and also make it clear that applications that are made will be public, and that any application that requests confidentiality will not be considered.
Very good. Thank you. Toward that end, this will be going out today for immediate release. And it includes a contact number, which is our general number, the nine-eight-three-seven-one-one-one number, and then extension eight-zero-nine-five. The Bering County Board of Commissioners has accepted the resignation today of District Three Commissioner Don Meeks. District Three is, let's, we need to fix this before it goes out. It says it's composed of, should be comprised, comprised of part of Benton Charter Township Precincts One, Three, Four, Five, and Six. The Board of Commissioners will be accepting applications for the commissioner seat being District Three. Anyone interested must be a resident of that district and a registered voter in that district. Applications may be obtained from the Bering County website, which is beringcounty.org, or can be picked up at the administration center here, seven oh one Main Street in St. Joseph in the administration department. As noted by corporate counsel, this vacancy must be filled within thirty days, which would be honored before the twenty-seventh of next month, or we would have to have a special election, which would be a monumental waste of money, since the primary is coming up in August. So with the thought that we will do this, the timeline is as follows. Applications must be received by Tuesday, the tenth of May, here at the administration department. Staff review will occur the next day, the eleventh, and then any applications that have been submitted will go to this board for review and consideration at our regular meeting on the twelfth of May. At that time, we will pick names of people that we want to interview. Interviews will take place at a special meeting on Thursday, the nineteenth, at eight-thirty AM, with an anticipated recommendation of an appointment. The person that we recommend to be appointed will either be appointed on the nineteenth or the twenty-sixth, the following Thursday, which would get us in a day ahead, actually, two days ahead of our deadline. And we can always change these times by suitable posting through the clerk's office, can even change meeting dates and times, or have a special meeting on as little as eighteen hours' notice. But that's tentative timeline and event calendar as we go through the next thirty days. Any questions, comments, changes, anything of that nature? Okay, so that media release with that minor revision will go out, and anyone watching us on YouTube now, or who tunes in later on YouTube, will get this information through the internet. Sir?
Townes District and Julie's District has changed.
And in January of twenty-three. Not, not until then. So... Okay, all right. If everyone's clear on this roadmap for the next thirty days, we need something in the minutes that reflects that, that roadmap that's laid out in the media release is adopted, approved and adopted by the board. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Scott. Is there support?
Second.
Michael got that. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign?
I oppose.
Pardon?
I oppose.
You don't want him to go?
No.
I hear you.
And that's what I wanted to vote. I was afraid we were gonna vote anything. I said, no.
I hear you.
Okay.
I hear you.
Put it in the record.
Okay, all right, so we'll, we'll note it.
Okay.
And before we do that photo, Ezra?
Yep. Donnie, I appreciate you so much.
All right, folks, if there's nothing else, we stand adjourned to next Thursday evening.
Don in public, I'm gonna ask that you all pass this area.
Don in company.